The Oatana City Council Meeting for Tuesday, May 16th, 2017 to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spenvy.
Here.
Voss.
Here.
Oakburg.
Here.
Dotson.
Here.
Burbank.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
And Mayor Coons.
Here.
We have all seven of the council and the mayor present.
Would all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and we are proud of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on business is approval of the agenda. We do have one item to pull from the agenda, and that is item 3.2, the contract for concessions at Lake Colmeyer. So I look for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve is noted.
Motion by Brent. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. First thing tonight is item 1.3 is a public hearing on the 2017 sidewalk repair projects, and we'll go to Kyle.
Good evening. This is our annual sidewalk repair project. Last year during our ADA inventory, we also looked for tripping hazards and other areas that needed sidewalk repair. Typically, these, I think there's 44 locations, it's 50/50, 50% property owner and 50% city costs. We did receive written comments that we'd like to include in the record from 422 South Cedar, and I'll summarize those as just concerns that a boulevard tree had caused damage. We will take a look at it. I can say, I have not looked at it yet, but this happens frequently, and the owner is typically responsible for their 50% still, but we will check it out.
Okay, thank you, Kyle.
With that, I'm available for any questions.
Okay. Because of this resolution, we need to have a public hearing, so we will open the floor to anyone who wishes to discuss about this matter. If you'd please come to the microphones and sign in and state your name for the record. I will open the public hearing at 7:05. You state your name and...
Just checking the time.
Okay.
Linda Hoffman. I live at 409 East Pearl Street, and my concern with my assessment is that the sidewalk is not very old, that at least one of the, I don't know what you call them, slabs was damaged the day that they took the forms off when it was installed not very long ago, and I feel very strongly that I shouldn't have to pay to replace it. I pointed it out at the time, nothing was done. I also have a maple tree that's kicking up the sidewalk at the most about that much, and I just feel like, how often should I have to pay to have my sidewalk replaced? Is the concerning thing for me, because it wasn't long ago that this sidewalk was put down, and if I'm gonna get hit every, you know, six, seven years with an assessment because there's a tree there, you know, that's just feels a bit, somebody should be looking at how to properly install the sidewalk so that it can last a bit longer than that.
Sure. Kyle, have you looked at this at all?
We will take a look at that and then look at when...
When it was installed.
When it was installed. There is provisions in the assessment policy for how long before we can assess again, so if there was a previous assessment, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't remember the years, but I will look and maybe I can get your phone number if you write it down.
Do you want me to write it down here?
Yeah, if you'd write it down there, and then we'll look into that.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else here that wishes to speak on this matter? There being none, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Motion by Kevin to close the public hearing, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll close the public hearing at 7:08. So, next thing on the agenda is a resolution to approve the plans and order the bids for the 2017 sidewalk repair project, and what is the council's wishes on that?
Most to approve.
Motion by Jeff to approve Resolution 50-17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we go to the mayor, and Mayor Tom, you have some things for us tonight.
Thank you very much. One of the things at this time of the year is always reappointments to different boards and new members, and what I would ask first for the council to approve is recommendations for board members for reappointment, and that would be Airport Commissioner James Kelton, Airport Commissioner Sharon West, Human Rights Commissioner Fred Ventura, Parking and Rec. Board Greg Lewis, Planning Commission Wes Kine, Planning Commission Terrence Tuckelberg, Planning Commission Susie Minigusco, Library Board Meredith Madison, Public Utilities Commission Randy Doyle, Shade Tree Commission Lowell Schultz, West Hills Commission Graham Benoit, West Hills Commission Douglas Elmeyer. I'd look for a motion to approve those.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve these recommendations?
Some moved. Second.
Motion by Nate to approve, second by Brent. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next would be new member recommendations, and they are not here tonight, so when they have their first meeting, we'll do the oath of office for them there. Oatana Public Library reward, Kristi Treus. Human Rights Commission Eric Cunningham just sent me an email tonight that his summer is getting very, very busy, and he asked to have his name removed, so remove that name from there. Human Rights Commission Robin Spandy. So there, only two appointments for new recommendations would be Robin and Kristi. I'd look for a motion to approve them.
Motion approved.
Motion by Nate to, or excuse, Kevin, to approve the new member recommendations, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
So those that are interested in serving on a board, we have an opening on the Human Rights Commission, we have an opening, two openings on the Downtown Parking Commission, we have an opening on the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, we have an opening on the Park and Rec. Board, and we have an opening on the Airport Commission. And if anybody's interested in filling one of those terms, either contact me or any one of the council members, and we will discuss with you whether that's the right fit or not and get you appointed. And with that, we have some people that have served a great past in boards, and I know we have one of them here tonight, so we'll recognize Cindy first. Did I get you to come up? You face the camera. The City of Oatana, the mayor and the city council express sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Cindy Hoverson for her four years of service on the Human Rights Commission, May 16th, 2017. Cindy, thank you very, very much.
My only comment is thank you for letting me serve. I look forward to doing that again once I'm done with this doctorate I'm working on. Thank you.
Thank you.
For some reason, I felt that motorcycle might be taking a higher priority.
And I'll just read the other ones that aren't here, but City of Oatana, the mayor and the city council express sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Greg Asprey for serving six and a half years on the Downtown Parking Committee, and we will make sure that these get mailed out soon. Mayor and city council express sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Jolene Mose for her three years of service on the Library Board. Mayor and city council express sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Bradley Betis for his 14 years of service on the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, HRA, and he did send a note, which I'll read.
Do you want to go to the mic, Tom? Just to make sure that it gets, that we in, it gets into the mic.
The note says, "Thank you for your privilege, thank you for the privilege of serving for the past 14 years or so years with the HRA committee. It has been a great experience due to the excellent work of people like Nancy Bochaman and Troy Klecker, who have handled all the duties of the HRA so well. The regular day-to-day work of administering housing vouchers, small city grants, rental applications, and the like has been handled so well by Nancy and the staff that assisted. These areas require little input by the HRA committee. The housing projects and rehab projects that have come through the committee have been very interesting and needed. Troy and the city have been proactive in helping bring needed housing and also in redevelopment. With the limited dollars we had to work with, I believe that has been leveraged to create a better Oatana. Keep up the good work again, and thank you for the time I had to serve on the HRA. Brad Betis."
Next one is Mayor and City Council express sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Scott Mose for his three years of service on the Airport Commission. Mayor and City Council express sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Christie Gudry for his six years of service on Park and Rec. Board. Mayor and City Council express sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Scott Cashman for his three years of service on the Downtown Parking Committee.
And last but not least?
Mayor and City Council express sincere appreciation and deep gratitude to Laura Mendez for his six years of service on the Human Rights Commission, and they are very, very attractive plaques, so we will mail them out soon.
Hey, do you have any new members here to give the oath of office to?
None of them have attended tonight, so they will do it at the next meeting.
But you do have a proclamation.
I do have a proclamation, and it was great honor. Did you see if I could you come up here? No, TC is just a mainstay in our community and in the athletic training field, and his first year of duty at Oatana High School was my son's football. Him and my son had a lot of fun times playing pranks on each other. But the proclamation reads, "Today we honor TC Carlisle for his many accomplishments as athletic trainer for our great city, and whereas TC's career began at the Oatana High School in 1990 as the school's first full-time trainer, today he also serves athletes in many neighboring schools, districts, including Petford, Blumentree, and New Orishon and Hartland. And whereas TC also works with employees at many companies in the town, including Wang Corporation, Oatana Public Utilities, Federated Insurance, Oatana Police Department, Steel County Sheriff's Department, Byrakon, and Bosch. TC is also the trainer for the Oatana Fire Department and the Gold Cross Ambulance Service, and whereas TC developed the Athletic Training Student Assistant Program at OHS that most consider the best youth training service in the state. And whereas TC was awarded Minnesota Athletic Training Association Recognition Award in 2010, and this year, the 2017 Fred Zamberledi Award from the Minnesota chapter of National Football Foundation. Now therefore, I, Thomas A. Coons, Mayor of the great city of Oatana, hereby proclaim Thursday, May 18th, 2017, as carrying TC Carlisle Day in the city of Oatana, and I urge all people to join TC in celebrating his great accomplishment, Day of May 16th, 2017." TC?
Thank you, sir.
My privilege to give you this proclamation, and I know tonight you have brought the trophy that you were just giving us last weekend, so if you just wanna show that and make a couple comments.
You should bring it closer.
No, just leave it sitting there.
Actually, if it's all right. Since this thing, this thing is fairly heavy, you can actually take it and just pass it through if you want to, but do me a favor, don't drop it, I'm gonna have to work on it. Just real quick, on February the 24th, I was at home in the middle of a major snowstorm and got a phone call that I was actually being awarded this, didn't even know I was nominated, didn't find out until when I got up there that I was actually nominated by a guy by the name of Gary Smith, who sits and the Athletic Training Institute of Athletic Medicine up at Fairview Ridge in the Fairview system, and he is actually one of the other past recipients of this. The past recipients, nine others, I'm the 10th recipient, most of them are professional athletic trainers in the state of Minnesota, so there's only like two or three of us that are high school athletic trainers that got this. And Ari Buck is my top student trainer right now. We have had probably about 90, I think there's 92 or 93 that have gone through our system. We are the largest athletic training student assistant program in the state, and Fred Zamberledi, to give you a little background, is actually about a half hour away from my hometown. He's from Melcher, Iowa, and I'm from Colfax, Iowa, and he went on to become the very first athletic trainer for the Minnesota Vikings, and served as a long-term trainer for them until 1998 when he retired. And he is still alive, and they have this award in honor of him. He was not able to be at the awards ceremony the other night, but yeah, this was quite the deal. I think I'm almost more nervous talking in front of you guys than I am at 1,000. So, and it was on May 7th, and it was held at US Bank Stadium in conjunction with the Minnesota Viking Team Awards, and there was about 20 other individuals that got different various awards and stuff, but this is the 10th recipient, or I'm the 10th recipient of this for the state, so this would be, in one respect, considered probably the top athletic training award in the state of Minnesota, so we bring that home. So I hope that myself and my student training program that we do Oatana proud, so.
That's great. Congratulations.
Thank you, TC.
Now, his day starts at 12:01 a.m., so people should call him right away, make sure he gets his full day in.
Before I leave, did you guys win? Never mind.
That hurt.
I think that was an ouch, Kevin. Okay. Next on the agenda is a consent agenda, and that is where we group minutes and permits and licenses, reports, monthly, other monthly reports, and contracts and miscellaneous items together for the council to review prior to the meeting, and we vote on them as a whole. So I would look for a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. President, in regards to issue 2.5, I will recuse myself from this vote.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Nate to approve the consent agenda, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? Kevin?
Greg, yeah, in regards to the 2.2.5, the Kona Ice, I would ask that the city send you a letter to that vendor reminding him that he is not allowed to park on our trail system. The trail system is made for walkers, pedestrians, bicycles, strollers, that type of thing. In years past, he has parked his vehicle on the trail and not allowing people to use it, so I would, I would ask that city contact him and let him know that that is not allowed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Any other comments? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. Now we move on to action items. The first item is 3.1, the finance report, and I will turn that over to Vice President Rainey to read that.
Thank you. Bills tonight, $50,149 to North American Title, that's the acquisition of 327 North Grove, $25,000 to Clifton Larson Allen, that's the city in HRA audits, $42,500 Department of Corrections, that is for our work crew, $21,197 Hessleton Construction, that is the regional storm water pond, Bay Estimate #6, $20,233 for LM CIT, that's the insurance for SC DIU. Other expenditures tonight are $202,340. Total expenditures tonight for approval, $361,419.72.
Thank you, Kevin. I look for a motion to approve the bills.
Motion approved.
Motion by Nate to approve the bills, finance report, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we move on to action items. There were, it was an action item, goofed me up because we moved this one.
Gotcha.
3.2 has been withdrawn, so next up is 3.3, licenses and permits, and this is for a garbage and refuse hauling license for Green RU Company, and we'll go to Troy for this.
We received an application from Gary Shamness of Green RU for a garbage and refuse hauling license for his company to allow their contract to haul garbage from Hy-Vee food stores. Background investigation was completed, no objections to issuance of the license. We received all the paperwork, including the annual fee of $75. This is an annual license which will expire at the end of this year, so staff would recommend approval of this application.
Okay, thank you, Troy. Any questions for Troy?
Most approved.
Motion by Kevin to approve this license, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next we move on to ordinances and resolutions. The first one on the agenda is item 3.4.1, Resolution 51-17, to accept bids and award the contract for the 2017 crack ceiling projects, and I'll go to Kyle.
Good evening. We received bids last Wednesday for our 2017 crack ceiling project. We received five bids, they were very competitive, and we're recommending award to Precision Asphalt Sealers of Osakis, Minnesota, in the amount of $83,490.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions of Kyle on this? I just have one, have we worked with Precision Asphalt Sealers before? Are you familiar with them?
We haven't, but the civil engineer is checking into them and didn't have any concerns.
Okay, thank you.
It was quite a bit under our engineer's estimate, so he verified that.
Sure. Thank you. Your motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brent to approve Resolution 51-17, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further questions, comments? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is 3.4.2, Resolution 52-17, to accept bids and award the contracts on the 2017 street and utility projects, and back to you, Kyle.
This is the recent assessment project we've been working on, it's the 2017 street and utility project. We received five bids, or actually six bids if I can count, and Wentzel Construction of Oatana was the lowest responsible bidder at $1,283,279.14. It was about 18% under engineer's estimate, and we had some very competitive bids, so we recommend approval.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions for Kyle?
There being none.
Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next items, the next three items, Proposed Ordinance #8-17, Proposed Ordinance #9-17, and Resolution 53-17, all go together on the Country Creek project, and we'll go to Troy for this one.
Yeah, so this is a request by Hall Construction to convert some twin home lots, townhome lots into single-family townhome lots, and you'd actually seen this request previously. They did modify the size of the units, and they did eliminate one of the single-family townhome units and created a single-family lot. So with that legal description change, we had to go back through and redo the approvals. So as mentioned before, there's a vacation of drainage and utility easements where the legal description has changed. The rezoning, again, the legal description has changed, and then the new plat with the new lot lines are all need approval, so staff would recommend approval. It did go to Planning Commission with no objections, so staff would recommend approval of all three requests.
Okay, thank you, Troy. Any questions for Troy on this matter? There being none, we'll take them in order. The first one is Proposed Ordinance #8-17. This is the first reading of vacate drainage and utility easements on Country Creek #6.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jeff to approve Resolution 53-17, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff. Thank you. This again is an ordinance, so we'll look for a roll call.
Councilmember Spenvy.
Aye.
Voss.
Aye.
Oakburg.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
And Schultz.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Motion carries. Last item is Resolution 53-17, preliminary plat of Country Creek #7.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brent to approve Resolution 53-17, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next three items, 3.4.6, 3.4.7, and 3.4.8, are in regards to property at Majestic Oaks, and we'll go back to Troy for this.
Okay, so this is a similar request with REO Development Group. This is property north of 26th Street and east of Kenyon Road. Currently, there are twin home, townhome lots platted, and again, they're looking to separate those out into single-family townhome lots, and again, in order to do that, they're changing some of the drainage easements, the rezoning, we'd have to modify the rezoning for that legal description, as well as having the preliminary plat. So they're not losing any of the number of units, they still have 22 patio home lots, they did downsize a couple of the single-family lots to make room for that, but none of the utilities within the street would need to be modified, so staff would recommend approval of all three requests for the drainage and utility easement vacation, the rezoning, as well as the preliminary plat.
Okay, thank you, Troy. Any questions from the council for Troy? There being none, we'll take these in order again. The first one is Proposed Ordinance #10-17, which is the first reading of the vacate drainage and utility easements at Majestic Oaks. And do I hear a motion?
It's removed.
Motion by Nate, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff. Any further discussion? There being none, this is an ordinance, so we'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Spenvy.
Aye.
Voss.
Aye.
Oakburg.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
And Schultz.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion carries. Next is Proposed Ordinance #11-17, the first reading of Z-335, to rezone the property located along the east side of White Oak Lane.
Motion to approve Ordinance #11-17.
Motion by Brent, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? There being none, this is an ordinance, so we'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Spenvy.
Aye.
Voss.
Aye.
Oakburg.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
And Schultz.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Motion carries. The last one is Resolution 54-17. This is the preliminary plat for Majestic Oaks #2. Do I hear a motion on?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jeff to approve Resolution 54-17, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
Oakburg.
Aye.
Dodson.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
And Schultz.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Motion carries. Last item is Resolution 53-17. It's the preliminary plat of Country Creek #7.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brent to approve Resolution 53-17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next three items, 3.4.6, 3.4.7, and 3.4.8, are in regards to a property at Majestic Oaks, and we'll go back to Troy for this.
Okay, so this is a similar request with REO Development Group. This is property north of 26th Street and east of Kenyon Road. Currently, there are twin hometownhome lots platted. And again, they're looking to separate those out into single-family townhome lots. And again, in order to do that, they're changing some of the drainage easements, the rezoning. We'd have to modify the rezoning for that legal description, as well as having the preliminary plat. So they're not losing any of the number of units. They still have 22 patio home lots. They did downsize a couple of the single-family lots to make room for that, but none of the utilities within the street would need to be modified. So staff would recommend approval of all three requests for the drainage and utility easement, vacation, the rezoning, as well as the preliminary plat.
Okay, thank you, Troy. Any questions from the council for Troy? There being none, we'll take these in order again. The first one is Proposed Ordinance 10-17, which is the first reading of the vacate drainage and utility easements at Majestic Oaks. And do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Nate. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff. Any further discussion? There being none, this is an ordinance, so we'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Spenvi.
Aye.
Voss.
Aye.
Oakburg.
Aye.
Dodson.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
And Schultz.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Motion carries. Next is Proposed Ordinance 11-17, the first reading of Z-335, to rezone the property located along the east side of White Oak Lane.
Motion to approve Ordinance 11-17.
Motion by Brent. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? There being none, this is an ordinance, so we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Spenvi.
Aye.
Voss.
Aye.
Oakburg.
Aye.
Dodson.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
And Schultz.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Motion carries. The last one is Resolution 54-17. This is the preliminary plat for Majestic Oaks #2. Do I hear a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jeff to approve Resolution 54-17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? None, so motion carries. Next up is 3.4.9, Proposed Ordinance 12-17. This is the first reading to vacate the drainage and utility easement at Lot 5, Block 3, Cedar Dale Edition #2. And since I'm the owner of this property, I will have to recuse myself from this item, and we'll turn it over to Vice President Rainey.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. So 3.4.9 is vacation of portion of drainage and utility easements in Cedar Dale #2. We'll go to Troy on this.
So with the southeast stormwater project done last year, there was some stormwater improvements that were done in different locations than previous, the previous stormwater lines. To accommodate that, the city agreed to vacate the old easement, the old easements in order to get the new locations. And so this is, we're doing the follow-up on that to go ahead and vacate those utility easements. And so staff would recommend approval of the proposed ordinance, or the proposed vacation.
What's council's wishes?
Motion to approve Ordinance 12-17.
Motion by Brent to approve.
Second.
Second by Nate. This being an ordinance, I ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Spenvi.
Aye.
Voss.
Aye.
Oakburg.
Aye.
Dodson.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
And Rainey.
Aye.
All six ayes.
Thank you. Turn the keys back over to Mr. Schultz.
Thank you, Kevin. Next item is 3.4.10, Proposed Ordinance 13-17. This is the first reading to vacate the drainage and utility easement at Lot 15, Block 3, Cedar Dale Edition #3. And to you, Troy.
This is actually the same request as the previous one, it's just the lot next door. Again, with the stormwater improvements we did last fall, there was some realignment of the stormwater lines, and so we're vacating the old easement on this lot as well, and so staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions for Troy on this matter? There being none, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nate to approve Ordinance 13-17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. This is an ordinance, so we'll look for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Spenvi.
Aye.
Voss.
Aye.
Oakburg.
Aye.
Dodson.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
And Schultz.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Motion carries. The last one is Resolution 54-17. This is the preliminary plat for Majestic Oaks #2. Do I hear a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jeff to approve Resolution 54-17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is 3.4.9, Proposed Ordinance 12-17. This is the first reading to vacate the drainage and utility easement at Lot 5, Block 3, Cedar Dale Edition #2. And since I'm the owner of this property, I will have to recuse myself from this item, and we'll turn it over to Vice President Rainey.
Thank you. This is the Parkway Edition Development Agreement, and I will go to Troy with this, please.
And I'm going to sound redundant yet again, but this is very similar to the previous request. It's a previously approved plat, Parkway Edition. Again, a development agreement setting the expectations of both the developer and the city for this. We did make some modifications like we did the previous development agreement, and you should have those in front of you, of the wording of two of the provisions within that development agreement. So staff would recommend approval of the proposed development agreement.
Thank you. Thank you for motion. Motion by Nate to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Voss. Any further discussion? All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Passes.
Yeah, to the development agreement, yes. Greg did that development agreement. He just said.
Thank you, Kevin. The last item in the action items is 3.4.13, Proposed Ordinance 14-17. It's the first reading of the hours of sale for off-sale liquor licenses. We're going to go to the other side of the table and go to Mark for this one.
Thank you. As you know, the 2017 legislature approved Sunday sales for liquor. I thought it would be helpful if we could form our local ordinance to the state statute, first of all, because we have to now allow sales on Sunday. But I think it's helpful just to clarify that the hours of sale are those that are set forth in the statute as well, and that is between 11:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. The city would not have the authority to deny the sales on Sunday. The city does have the authority to shorten the hours of sale if it chose to do so, but I believe that for ease of enforcement, we should leave the, leave the ordinance as the statute provides for a Sunday sales between the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark on this matter?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nate to approve Ordinance 14-17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff. Any further discussion? There being none, again, this is an ordinance, so we'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Spenvi.
Aye.
Voss.
Aye.
Oakburg.
Aye.
Dodson.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
And Schultz.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Motion carries. That concludes our business for this evening. We'll now go to public comments. If there's anybody in the audience we wish to speak, and ask them to come to the microphone, sign in, and try to keep their talk to two minutes or so, or items not on the agenda. Yes, sir.
We did it. It was on the, it was on the consent agenda. How do I get out? Doug needs to slide this.
My name's Mike Conrad. I'm with Oatana Steel County Amateur Radio. Hopefully you all got the memo I sent out. We're having our Field Day event, June 24th and 5th, Saturday and Sunday, at Willow Creek School, the soccer field in front of the building. We invite all of you, or any of you, to come out and visit us, see what we can do. This is an annual event we have. It's an emergency preparedness exercise in that we drag our stuff out of our comfortable home operating positions and set them up as we would have to if we were asked to help in an emergency situation. It's a public demonstration. We invite any and everybody to come out. We are more than happy to show you what we can do, try to answer any questions you have. It's also a contest event, starting at 1:00 p.m. Saturday and going to 1:00 p.m. Sunday. And we will be on the air 24 hours. Not maybe all of us at the same time, but some of us. Though, again, I'd be happy if a couple of you could make it. It's been a while since anybody from the city council has been out to see us.
How many years have you been doing this?
Uh, I think this is probably the fifth or sixth year.
Okay, okay.
I haven't counted.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? There being none, we'll go to council comments, and we'll start out with Brent.
I've got nothing this evening.
Doug?
Yeah, I want to just take a second here and, excuse me, thank staff a little bit. Kyle, I sent Kyle a note about a dangerous intersection and a hedge a couple of weeks or not even, a week ago, and within about two days that was cut down and removed, and I want to thank you and whoever took care of that. It doesn't seem like a big deal, but, you know, if it's your wife and kids that get hit by the truck coming through there, it's a pretty big deal. So thanks for doing that for us.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Jeff?
I'd like to say thanks to TC. I have two beautiful daughters that are involved in athletic training, and one currently doing athletic training in Iowa, and the other one is currently training to be an EMT, so, and it's all due to TC, and I'd like to thank him for that.
Nate?
I wanted to echo Jeff's comments. I want to congratulate TC on his award, and also thank him for attending to my wife as she took a bit of a tumble in the, from the Hard 5K. So thank you for that as well.
And she's okay now?
She's doing okay. Nothing broke.
Jeff? Oh, Dave?
Nothing to add tonight.
Nothing to add. Kevin?
Yeah, I'll echo TC in the past, has made sure that my kids remained healthy and could participate. I do have a question tonight. We had two out-of-city vendors knocking on our door today in regards to hail damage and repairs. Have they come up here for proper?
We were very busy today. I actually issued probably about eight solicitor permits. They are required. If someone's going door-to-door within the city, they should have a solicitor permit. The permits are issued at no cost. It's more of a registration process. They're required to bring in an identification, and we take a copy of their ID and issue them a city-issued card that shows that they have a solicitor's permit within the city.
Okay, thank you. I just, gosh, word goes around fast, and we had a little bit of hail last night. I was surprised that metro area companies were down here, but I just would ask the citizens to be very vigilant, know who you're hiring.